People watching on TV. Well, they usually tell them that they can't right here, they can't play.
Just push the button, yeah. Organized since the cameras are in the back of the road. Can we do that? Can we get a team to like move that back row up one row, have the cameras in the back?
Yes, move it behind you.
Oh yeah, we can all move up our chairs. And then the cameras go, yeah, that's fine.
All right, just make sure there's space for everyone to get through and the racks are on here.
Probably, yeah, do move the chairs that are in the back. I don't think we need to move our chairs.
They want to put all the cameras in the back, I think.
Right. I have a camera, so I'll stay in the back. What's up, Lenny?
Well, you were already in the right place, weren't you?
Yeah.
So you, you planned ahead, buddy.
I'm purpose.
Just don't trip, whatever you do.
What's up, Lenny?
Hang on, let me turn with this. You don't mind if I still sit here, do you?
No, no.
I don't care if I don't see, it ain't gonna bother me. She's the one I gotta worry about.
Right.
I'm gonna stay right here, back at the camera head.
Bring your chair up here.
What was it?
There, we've got one over here.
Are you sure?
Yes. Yeah, I've just had some of the exams.
Okay.
He's gotta move his stuff to the back or something. Make sure the John List goes through. Where's the carnival meeting?
Still not as bad as Flint.
I was trying to put up a picture with the name of the person who are...
Just like at the Flint City Council meeting, I'm both static recording and live streaming, guys. I have met some that aren't dirty, or at least they portray themselves quite well as not being dirty, so... So, let's see, we've got TV nineteen, we've got two, four, and seven. We got a whole bunch of, uh, independent correspondents. It, it's too early to tell as far as this, uh, Hamtramck, uh, chief goes. But the FBI is investigating and he's been put on administrative leave, so they saw something that, uh, put up red flags, so... We're gonna see what happens. Well, now she put that damn podium right in my way. That damn microphone is right in the mayor's face now. What's up, Benny, AV? The chief of police here in Hamtramck, Michigan, has been put on administrative leave along with another officer here. Uh, they were supposedly trying to, uh, coerce other officers to hide, uh, illegal acts by the chief. And this is supposed to be an informational meeting to shed more light on that situation. Yes, nobody cares, that's what it's about. What's up, Parker? We don't know, uh, what illegal acts they were trying to cover up for us. They may, uh, shed light on that here at this meeting. You're welcome, Benny. That's crazy. Oh shoot, low down, look at that Melvindale lieutenant that's been, uh, an evil POS his whole career. And when we went to Melvindale, the lieutenant we talked to did awesome. But then there's that other lieutenant. That's a total tyrant piece of... Again, for those that didn't hear it the first time, along with this livestream, I'm also static recording, so... The static will obviously be less shaky because it's on a monopod, whereas this is livestream is being handheld. I like what they have on the wall over there, guys. They get to pledge allegiance. Well, we're hoping they'll at least tell us, uh, what kind of accusations there are.
Hey, worry about my daughter.
So here's two, four, and seven, here. All the big guys. It was supposed to start nine minutes ago.
All right, good afternoon, everyone, thanks for coming. I call this a special city council meeting to order today is May twenty-third, two thousand twenty-five, and it's four ten PM. Would the clerk hold the rose, please?
Um, before I do, I'm gonna just read a quick email that the clerk sent, why he's not here. He says, "Good evening, everyone, I respectfully submit this statement to inform the mayor, council, and everyone that I cannot attend a special council meeting scheduled for four PM. Due to the limited notice and insufficient time, coupled with prior obligations related to my interstate job, I'm regrettably unavailable to participate. I wish it had been scheduled for seven PM." City council meetings, then I would have been able to attend. I appreciate your understanding and reaffirm my continued commitment to serving residents of Hamtramck. With that said, the congressman Fai is not here. Uh, Congressman Musa?
Yes.
Congressman Zifan is not here. Congressman Mahmoud?
Yes.
Congressman El Samiri?
Yes.
Congressman Hassan?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, we have a forum.
Thank you. Please rise for the clergy of reasons. Let's begin my prayers again. All right, do we have any community announcements today? Okay, well, thank you, everyone. We don't have, um, many items to discuss today, but, uh, looks like there's no proclamations or recognitions as well, right? Um, any additions or additions to the agenda? All right, so we will start, uh, with the interesting part, which is the public comment. But before that, I would like to mention that, uh, everybody should follow the rules. When you speak, look at the mayor, no interruption, no personal abusive language or, um, personal attacks. Please be civil and, uh, respect each other, no interruptions. Um, if you'd like an extra minute, you can ask the mayor for that. We can stop.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Can I start with reading off the emails? First one is from Hamtramck Command Officers and Hamtramck Police Officer Association of Michigan. Sadly, over the past week, we as a union, we are several allegations that have affected not only the police department, but the city of Hamtramck as well. After speaking with the Ranking Officers Union and the Patrol Union, and the majority were in favor of speaking on this issue. First, we would like to show a compliment for our current city manager, National Garberino. Since his return, city manager Garberino has expressed his dedication to not only the police departments, but to the city as a whole. The statements have been proven to not only be words, but he has taken appropriate action to better the police department, which in turn better serves City Hamtramck. Granted, his tenure as city manager, Garberino has strengthened the police department contracts, which in turn has assisted in being able to hire more qualified individuals, retain our current membership, and raise morale in the, in the department. City manager Garberino has been a big reason that the union, unions, and city have a good working relationship. We feel that in our duty to our boys, to voice our support for city manager Garberino during this time. Secondly, we would like to speak in our, in favor of Chief Jamil Al Tahiri. The police unions are just as surprised with the rest of the Hamtramck community of the recent allegations. Chief Al Tahiri has been a great, has made great strides to mend the relationship between the residents of Hamtramck and the police department. Between the community outreach programs that have been initiated and the transparency that has been shown, just like city manager Garberino, he has raised morale within our departments. With the above statements being made, the union would ask everyone to reserve their personal opinion until the completion of the investigation. The union asks the community to understand just because someone in the law enforcement field is put on leave, does not mean they are guilty of wrongdoing. Being placed on leave in the law enforcement field is a common practice in by the police and by policy to protect the interest of the residents within the city. The union believes that it is the duty of the city manager who is in charge of overseeing the chief's position to take these actions, no different than how the chief would be expected to handle an allegation within the police department. As a union, we would ask for a fair and impartial investigation. During the investigation, the union is certain the city of Hamtramck will continue to have top-notch police services, which residents deserve. If and when Chief Al Tahiri is cleared, we as a union look forward to continuing to work under his leadership sincerely COA and HPOA. Next one is from Lynn Blazi, local resident, Holope Yan Kampo. This is absolutely ridiculous. Four of you are under investigation for election fraud. Two are running for reelection even though you don't actually live there, here, and in the process have shown that you're committing tax fraud by claiming homes that is somewhere that you don't actually live consistently. And now your police chief is under investigation for some pretty serious stuff, I've seen the allegations. Instead of doing the right thing and playing by the rules, you all consistently ignore them and make up new rules to your own advantage. I didn't want to believe Amanda when she said that it was the Wild West during her time in office, and truly believed I could make a difference. With all that's going on, I'm incredibly grateful for my choice not to run this time around. Your choice to lash out at folks whose job is to protect our elections and ensure our city runs smoothly is ridiculous, childish, and further evidence that none of you are fit for office or public service. Your childish temper tantrums make us look like we're being run by a bunch of toddlers. Do better and be better. I commend both Max and Rana for doing the right thing and working to put an end to this dog and pony show. And because you guys love to revert back to this argument, these allegations have nothing to do with ethnicity or religion and everything to do with the law, character, and ethics. Your games affect the lives of those who actually live here, and none of you are doing a good job of being ambassadors for our city or showing the world how wonderful it really is to be a part of this community. Stop playing games, thank you, Lynn Blazi. This is from Carrie Beth Leslie, also a, uh, Hamtramck resident. I have a job, so I can't be there, please read my comment. As a person who has had multiple source, source confirmed to me that the FBI is involved, I stand behind Max's decision to suspend both involved officers while the FBI sorts out the drama. The last thing any of you need, since most of you are under investigation for one reason or another, is to look like you are getting in the way of the FBI. The prudent action is the one that Max took. No one has been fired, but everyone needs to be kept a distance from the city activities while the investigation is going on. Suspension with PEG is a proper act. It serves you well politically to not make side while this is sorted out. I have seen the allegations that sent to me anonymously from one of the involved parties. And if there is any splinter of truth to any of them, you do not want to get involved, it is not about the demotion. Many of you want to support someone who has made big changes and has represented communities well, and hopefully at the end of this, you will be proud to welcome the chief back to active duty. However, if the chief has committed a crime, you will look foolish for not taking a step back and letting the law enforcement sort this out. Signed, Larry Buss, Larry Beth, I'm sorry, Carrie Beth Leslie, Ph.D. This is from Jeff, Marion Jethlin, to Hamtramck city mayor and police. Chief Jamil Al Tahiri is an honorable man. He is a great father and person. I am saddened by these false allegations against him and me. He informed me some time ago not to trust police officer David Adancheck or enter a car. When I asked why, he stated that I don't know if he's serious or joking, but he wanted to put drugs in a car in a rescue as a way for me to get custody. From then on, I never spoke to police officer David Adancheck. But Jamil did tell me that he was not a good guy, and that he and the city manager are doing shady things and to stay away from them or anyone associated with them. I'm not going to speak about my personal business, but I want to clear that Jamil never physically abused me, and we have a very respectful relationship. I have argued with him in the past as other couples, as any other couples. Thank you for listening to me. There, also, there was a report taken in the ship, and I voluntarily left to see my son because I wasn't feeling good. Thank you, mayor and police, Marion Kampo. That's all for email, I'm sorry, I'm left with the...
There are some people who said they sent emails. Is that, is that what you have? I received that some people not, not being able to contact physically, but they sent emails.
I'll check one more time, bear with me. I did get an email, but it was to, it wasn't a public comment, so I'm not sure which one you're referring to.
What's, uh, what's the name of the person?
Was there a email?
Rafat? Somebody texted, it was named Rafat, and another one, Louis or something? And...
Today? And they wrote public comment?
Yeah, Rafat and Louis, two people who sent emails.
I'm pretty good with that kind of stuff, Mayor.
Okay, if you don't find it, I don't know.
And if you, if, if you want to do your, if you want to type some most of the sun into it and see if I got some in time, I'll, I would be more than happy to assist, but I don't see anything in my emails.
Okay, go ahead, let me...
Okay, uh, Norbert Rebels? Sir, three minutes? Three minutes, sir.
I've been, I'm sixty years old, my mental life, and, uh, lost everything, and, uh, had a big problem with my brain. No more with that. Chief knows that. He said, "Come on, I'll go get some coffee." I'm gonna go to coffee. I come back home, come back home, there's two big trucks in front of my house. And I'm like, "What's going on?" He said, "Everyone, redo your... You know, my own family, two of them, who are pretty, pretty rich, wouldn't help your dad. This guy used to come to check on me once a week, just to see how he's doing." And I go inside, come back outside. These guys are tearing off my roof. I'm like, "Where are they going?" I was shocked, I started crying. Six years old, I'm a football coach, I'm like, "I'm crying." I grabbed him, I kissed him once before, gave him a push and backed him. I say, "No, don't ever push him back, man." When I grabbed you, you hit me in the face. You bit me in my eye. Seriously. Now I'm gonna start crying, so...
Thank you, sir. Yeky Amawari?
I'm here in support of, uh, the region, Al Thahri. I want, I don't know what it is, I mean, this accusation has just one effect on our community, our young people, first and second and third and fourth generation, Yemeni Americans. The young people who really, we try to give their, their education and we are in a good way. Now this will affect in our, not only on the, uh, career of, uh, chief Jamal Al Thahri, but it's gonna be affecting in our community. All this media here, and I hope they will be balanced and they be fair to our community who tried to, our community trying to be, emerge with this, uh, whole, feminine community in the US. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Justin Petrosik? Justin?
Justin what?
Petrosik? Trojan?
Dobsting?
Nothing better than that.
Is there a Justin Pedosting?
The TruSet.
The TruSet.
The TruSet.
Just say it's older than you said.
Yeah. I'll count. He's talking.
Thank you.
Move it away, that's why we're trying to call.
Three minutes. Thanks, Justin.
Hi, this is you. I'm here in support of, uh, the city council. I'm a, I'm a well man. Uh, I'm just much, uh, long time in Hamtramck. Got a strange accent, I understand. I'm a bachelor, see? My one. And, uh, still recovering, um, pretty darn disabled, I don't know that. Pretty darn disabled. I don't know that. He's not a friend of mine, not a neighbor. Born and have back here. I needed a lot of help with some recent events. Where I first found myself in temporary housing was a municipal apartment lot. It didn't have plenty of gap spaces. And I just reached out to him and it was fixed like the next day. And I got back into my house, my old flat. The streetlight was broken and my brain injury is stabbing in my eyes and stuff. And he fixed that the next day. And I know I had problems with my alley and I trashed them to get picked up. But every time I reach out to him, he coordinates and gets done. And it's a longer list than that. You'll have to forgive me. I just, you know, it may sound like small problems. Like somebody who's like trying to get back on their feet in their home. Very significant solution. I don't know what this is all about. I really don't. But gosh, it'd be a shame. It's not a person not supposed to care.
Yes, Cash is here.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Lukman Salak, Hamtramck, Hamtramck resident?
Salam.
Salam.
Abish Sal.
Yeah.
Salam.
Getting that here.
Lukman Salak. Living in Hamtramck for almost twenty-seven years. I love Hamtramck and I love Hamtramck to be here. Healthy, beautiful. And we know, we're all there to serve the city. Even electric officials, our appointed administrators. We should respect the law. I'm not here to support anyone against anyone, but we should support the law. Mistakes happen and investigators are working on it. So I advise you all to read the investigations and read it again and again and listen to the city attorney before you make any decisions. The city budgets is in bad shape. We will not accept anything to make it worse. So please, read it, make the right decision, and thank you so much.
Thank you. Matt Fiziali?
Matt Fiziali?
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 Matt Fiziali? Is there a Matt?
Mayor, Council, how you guys doing today? I just am here to support Max because at the end of the day, in my opinion, you know, coming to watch you guys the last couple of city council meetings and stuff. These meetings would not run without Max. The city would not run without Max. And while you may disagree with him politically or administratively, at the end of the day, you guys are not the ones doing the work. He is. And who are you going to find to do the job besides him? Nobody else wants to do that job. Nobody else really wants to run for council or mayor. So why would you guys try to replace him last minute on a Friday before Memorial Day? You know, we all have better things to be doing than sitting here doing this. And because of politics, because of your guys' corruption, you want to get rid of him for just trying to do his job. And you know, at the end of the day, he does do a pretty good job. I might disagree with some of the things that he wants to do, but at the end of the day, you guys can barely even make a motion without the clerk and the city manager coming in here and helping you guys out. You would not be able to even make a motion. You wouldn't be able to legally have this meeting without them. And I just want you guys to remember that. Thank you.
Megan Featherstone, also Hamtramck resident? Megan Featherstone?
Megan Featherstone?
Good afternoon. My name is Megan. I've lived in Hamtramck for over a decade. I would like to say the same of you, but I think we all know that several of you don't or are under investigation or not, which is a waste of all of our tax dollars. Every time I come in here, I have to talk about something that you have done to waste our tax dollars. Okay? I may not agree with Max politically, just like my friend, but he's doing his job. I'm here in support of Max and our city clerk for doing their job. Every time I hear about this council, it's a waste of our money. A waste. Shameful. I remember Councilman Hassan. Didn't you run on getting rid of the income tax?
I had to.
Address the mayor.
Okay, I'm addressing the mayor. What's up? I'm pretty sure Councilman Hassan ran on getting rid of our income tax five years ago. What's up with that? I've come here, I don't know how many times, see Councilman Hassan taking a nap. What's up with that? I'm not even sure if you, mayor, even live here. Definitely, definitely love people who don't. Definitely looking out for none of us who live here, who pay our taxes, and who deserve better than this foolishness of all of these people in here. Because you want to use your time and our money to try and further your political career, which for some of y'all haven't even had an honest... Y'all are shameful. We deserve better. There are people in this city who have needs. Thank you. None of them are being met by this city. And you know that. You know that. And that's why Councilman Hassan is looking at me smirking because he knows that. Shameful. Shameful behavior. We all deserve better.
Scott Aronson?
Aaron Tino Aaron.
Aronson.
Scott Aronson?
Hello. My name is Scott Aronson. I'm the owner of the hostel. This is the first time, I've been a city business owner for about seven years. This is the first time, I'm not a political person, this is the first time I've ever been at one of these meetings. And I just felt it was important that I come to support, to support Matt. You know, I don't have a lot of issues with our business, with the hostel, it's on hold. But whenever I do, and I send a message, you know, he's the guy that cares. And I think it's very hard to find somebody like that. And when you have somebody like that, you know, it's, you should be doing everything that you can to keep them. And so I just, you know, urge you, if that's something that you're not planning on doing, I urge you strongly, strongly. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Abraham Algham? Abraham, what is it?
Abraham Algham.
What?
Abraham Algham.
Abraham Algham.
Good evening, council mayor.
Evening.
Manager. City Attorney Card and Deputy Chief. First of all, David Adamcheck, the investigator. In January, he said to me and the chief, he wants to rent a car, put drugs in it, and have the chief's wife take it. He'll take it down. The chief said, "No way. This is my child's mom. I would never do that to her." Well, she's giving you a hard time. She's mental. She's on drugs. He said, "Doesn't matter. You're not doing that to her." Two weeks after that, he asked me to be a CI. Confidential informant for the Hamtramck Police Department. And I would work with the FBI, DAA, state police. And Max would pay me. But that's what he said. The city will pay you, will make your ID, will do this and will do that. I said, "No, thank you." Is that why he asked for my ID and my email? A month before that, he said, "Yes, I'm working on it." I said, "I'm not doing that to my community." I've been here thirty years as an activist. And in the political community activist for twenty-six years. You go and pick an other... And the chief was saying, "You can be whoever you want." And now, yesterday, I don't have Facebook anymore, by the way. Max posted that the Monroe County prosecutor got the case for you guys already for the bona fide. Who's pushing it? I was like, "I should miss this." And who's pushing it and why not? The residency, I've been pushing it for seven months. But why the residency just came up now, the bona fide came now, and the chief's situation came now? And there was a guy that bought a car from New York. Came here, went around outside City Hall. He said, "Abraham, I want you to come with me and jump into my car." I said, "I'm not going with the other one." He pops up with the policeman. I said, "David, if you're going to pick up the car, I'm going with you because I feel safe." When I'm next up, police officer, as big as David. He's also investigated for the city. And he was fired in 2003. We'll have to find out why he was fired. So we went, got the car. My son drove it to New York. Yes, my son drove the car to New York. And it wasn't stolen. The guy had a title. The title was signed. So I don't know what is all this about. They mentioned something that happened in New York. Well, Max wants to bring a company, outside company to investigate. No, Max. We want the state police and the FBI to investigate. Not a separate investigation company, private company. Because we know David has a company. Max has an investigation company. And the third company might be that friend. Might be my favorite. We want the state police and the FBI to investigate every little thing that goes on in Hamtramck. Thank you.
Oops, there's no clapping in here. Audience, we're going to be in silence.
Angela Haban?
Angela Haban?
Haban.
Haban.
Can you check the email I need?
Yes, keep it down.
No kidding, please.
Hi, Hamtramck resident, live on Center Street, live in Hamtramck resident. I'm just here to speak on behalf of the process. It seems like there's a lot of allegations against the chief and detective. And I think the right thing to do is what Max has done and start an investigation and have people on paid leave. No one's been fired. It's a paid leave while we understand what's going on and what's the best thing for the city. I don't want anyone to lose their jobs because of a power struggle or because of misunderstandings. I think the right thing to do at this point is exactly what Max has done in representing the city and the best interest of people who live here and all of you. It's embarrassing to be in the news as a city for these reasons all the time. There's a process to be followed when it comes to investigations for wrongdoing in every single line of business. And my job, if I do something wrong, I'll be put on leave and not paid while it's investigated, right? So I think the right thing to do would be to allow the investigation to go through. Max and his job, as the investigation says, and then make the decisions on what to do from there. That's the best thing for the city. It saves the taxpayers a bunch of embarrassment and all a bunch of time and money. And it's really the only fair thing to do at this point. So please just keep everyone in their jobs until what's done is done and the right thing to do is determined.
Thank you. Hassan Owen, New York Harbor resident?
You ready, Mr. Mayor? The attorney sent the thing. His contract, he has written void. Tell you what, this was supposed to be disclosed to the public. The mayor could not get it and nobody could get it until I sent the Freedom of Information with a retention letter. And I demanded if I don't get it, I'm going to litigate. What happened is, he hid this from the public. So we're going to sit here and blame this individual because him and David are investigating people, false allegations for a chief of police for twenty-five years from New York City that came to dedicate life here to change him. There was not a bunch in and a bunch out in the beginning. Guy smoking cigarettes upstairs. And he bought, what's it called? A guy with overtime, stealing overtime. You guys forgot about that. And this guy's going to come here like a coward, sit in here with this right here, comes, works over here, lies to you, does not disclose this. And what's the city attorney going to say? Oh, he has another contract? No, this contract right here is the original contract he signed. He's not allowed to work in the city. He signed that contract right here, his signature, his signature's right here. His signature's right here. I like the extra minute, please. His signature's right here, Mr. Mayor. He signed it. He agreed not to work for the city. He agreed that if you, that you guys, you lied to you. Remember that. Lies after lies. It's okay for Max to lie. They're like, "Eh, eh." Taking care of over a hundred officers. A small city over here, he wants to come steal your, you know, sit there, talk about his wife, his kid. This is all David. And David, Max suspended David to make it look all... That was, nobody's talking about David. They're all bashing the chief of police. And that's the problem. You guys have to understand, there's one, two, three, four, five. You make a vote today, get this guy out of here. Because his contract is expired, void. If that attorney's going to tell you, "I know otherwise," I'm filing a grievance today against that attorney. If you guys sit there and tell me that the attorney told you that this is not void, it's void automatically. It's a shame that we're going to sit here and bash the chief of police. Guys, wake up. The clerk does her job and Max is sitting here slacking off, worried about Mohammed, worried about this guy, worried about that guy. But he's not worried about himself for lying. You cannot work here. It's very simple. If we're going to give Max a step on the wrist, we might as well give everybody a step on the wrist, guys. Think about it. Vote on it. Get this guy out of here.
Thank you. Sam Alasari?
Mr. Mayor, may I have a second? Just a point of clarity, that document is in public available?
No, it wasn't publicly available.
For some days, we put out a simple search, Google search would have provided it. Mr. Ayun didn't even have to fill it, but apparently he didn't pause Google it. Further, Mr. Ayun is not an attorney. He relies on ChatGPT and that's kind of...
Hey, hey, hey!
I'm frankly kind of disturbed about the slander and thing he just misrepresents constantly to this council, but that's not true.
Yeah, three minutes?
Mr. Mayor, city councils, this moment is considered in this chair. Mayor, include the diversity of life expectancy, the unity of the city. So, unity of the city. So, stand here and make the right decision and we will stand up. Make the city...